Welcome to the State of the Union, just have our on the call to order our town meeting. It's a special meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of town of Berlin. Well, first of all, sorry, before we do that, skip them. We need a moderator, so we need nominations from the floor. All right, second on that?
Second.
Any, any other nominations for the court? We'll close the nominations. No, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so move, so we have the moderator, thank you. So, nominations are clear, we voted, we're good. So eligibility to vote on this is a special meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings. The town of Berlin will be held at Berlin Town Hall, Council Chambers, two quarter of the Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut, on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022, at 6:45 for the following purposes. And I'll let Kate read the legal notice.
A special meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Berlin will be held on Berlin. At Berlin Town Hall, Council Chambers, two forty twenty two Road, Berlin, Connecticut, on Wednesday, November 2nd. Two hundred. It must be tonight.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-two at 4:45 PM for the following purpose. To approve a non-voting appropriation of $1 million from April 23 General Fund, unassigned fund now. For the purchase of a real property owned by Rio Vista Associates LLC on Action Street. Known as the Cesspool Map 22-4, Block 155, Block 1 through 8 of the Cesspool Map. Twenty-three dash one, Block 15, Block nine dash thirteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a Wednesday night, Kate, or I can teach that, so a little bit of that. Is there a resolution to come before the town meeting?
To approve a non-mortgage appropriation of $1 million for the 23 General Fund, unassigned fund now. For the purchase of a real property owned by Rio Vista Associates LLC. Known as the Cesspool Map 22-4, Block 155, Block 1 through 8 of the Cesspool Map. Twenty-three dash one, Block 15, time through thirty.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
So now we have a discussion on the resolution. Anyone in the audience, it's obviously a town meeting, so. Voters, do we read that part? Eligibility to vote?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Yeah.
Carol Yorke.
Yeah.
Could you come up to the mic?
Carol Yorke. Just a quick question. Why do we want this property?
Good question. So, part of this is to do with a lawsuit to make the last town attorney. Explain why we're at this point, why we arrived at this point.
So the answer to your question is that in 2008, the town bought seventy-seven acres from Rio Vista Associates' predecessor, Pistol Creek, for five and a half million dollars. And at that time, that property was the subject of a proposed development. This property is approximately twenty acres, thirteen building lots, that were retained by Rio Vista Associates. Rio Vista Associates agreed to a restricted covenant as part of that 2008 settlement and filed an application with the planning and zoning permission under Connecticut General Statute 8-30G, which is the Port Vale Development Statute. And the town won on merits the 8-30G appeal. And Rio Vista also filed a declaratory judgment action seeing the restricted covenant declared invalid as against public policy based on the Port Vale considerations. Town won a summary judgment motion on that, that's been appealed. And it's right now in appellate court. If the litigation doesn't resolve, likely to be in the Supreme Court. So in the context of discussions about the resolution of the pending litigation, which discussion included a pre-argument conference with retired Connecticut Supreme Court Justice Evilly, the opportunity for the town to purchase this property arose. And, you know, there were a lot of discussions that were had at the pre-argument conference with Justice Evilly, as well as at multiple executive sessions with the town council about whether or not this is property that the town would like to acquire and whether it made sense for the town to acquire the property as a means to put an end to additional litigation, not knowing what the outcome ultimately would be of litigation, what the additional cost would be, and whether or not there was an opportunity to acquire the property at fair value. So those were the discussions that led to the negotiations. The property is currently valued by the town at a number in excess of $1 million. That's based on the ten-one-seventeen valuation. So the proposed purchase price is below the value that the town taxes the property for. In terms of what the long-term use of the property is, I don't think there's been any discussions about that. You know, whether it's going to be added to the existing properties, open space, whether the town would eventually look to have the property developed, I don't know. That goes beyond the legal. Well, that's a policy decision for the town in the long term. But for the time being, there's an opportunity to acquire the property at a number that's below the tax of the property for. Also put an end to a couple pieces of litigation.
And the litigation, we don't know how it will end up ultimately, but it could end up with, this is all just conjecture. We have no idea how it'll end up. Because once you're in the court's hands, you don't know what will happen, but it could end up to be, there would be many, many homes, apartments, whatever, built on that property. So rather than risk, put a risk to the town for that area to be developed outside of what Arizona even says. It's just a consensus of the town. And any other question, please?
I'm not comfortable with it, but I have a question.
What's that? No questions, yeah, I'm sorry.
At this point, I'm not comfortable with it.
Yeah.
Basically, spending a million dollars just to let them go away and get them off the hook as long as ourselves. Especially since litigation has been in our favor all the way through so far. So we have no, no. We don't know what we're going to do with it. We've already got how many acres of Pistol Creek we don't know what to do with yet. Although, I don't know, it just seems to me that the million dollars could be used for something else.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this property? Counsel? And, yes, Trump?
I'd say I'm generally against the town playing where building the land. This is a knee-jerk reaction back at the time, I wasn't even in favor of urgency Pistol Creek. But I think in this situation, it's going to save the town money. With the climate, with the state leadership pushing affordable housing, it'll maintain control of the development for the town. I think in the long run, it's going to save the taxpayers a lot of money by supporting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you know, with the individuals that we're dealing with here, I mean, we don't know what the cash. But as I characterized it earlier, we shoot and crap with the devil. And I think this long term is probably the best solution that would be had.
Anybody else? Yeah, that, I mean, that was the consensus, you know, obviously in our discussions and just, it was a risk to the town that I don't think any of us really wanted to spend this, this money, but we are adding to the open space. And like I said, the alternative would not be a good one for the town at all by any means. So to take that risk on a very nice area of town was not, not really a good idea. Again, it could, it would be a little bit of a crapshoot. We may win, yeah, possibly, we won on some of it already, but, you know, as it continues along. There were some legal strategies that, you know, may have been used and we might certainly come out on the short end, which would not, believe me, folks, if, you know, if folks aren't happy spending this money now, taxpayers and nor am I, nor is anybody on the council, they wouldn't be happy with what the end result would have ended up there if we lost the litigation, so. So, you know, kind of an either or, the worst of two evils really, I think, that we looked at. And again, we're adding open space to the path to, so, which is always valuable, but. So anyone else? Council members?
Just, just, yeah, Jack Dizino, one sixty-six thousand tree. Just to speak, to really hammer home the fact that, you know, having, we all, we've all spoken with many residents in the Pistol Creek area over the past couple of years with the ongoing projects that have happened there. And I really, I, I think we have yet to find really one resident in that particular part of town that wants to see development of this magnitude in that part of town that is traditionally used for open space and non-high-density housing. So I, I really think we need to hammer home the fact that the worst-case scenario, which is in the realm of possibility, however remote that might be, is entirely inconsistent with how people want to see the Pistol Creek part of town now and in the future. So I think we really, we need to look at both the present and, and prospectively as well to make sure that we're not overdeveloping that part of town and reserving the right for a more appropriate use later down the road. There is a price for certainty, and in this case, actually, when you look at what land valuation may be in the, in the next revaluation period, we're actually getting off relatively cheap.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's all, that was all, thank you, Jack, that's all part of our discussion. You know, that's just how it goes sometimes, but I definitely would not, but if we lose, as you said, what would potentially be built there would be completely out of character with that, with that part of town. Certainly would not be in, in line with our zoning rates for that area, which is, you know, larger lots and less density. They think the original plan was sixteen houses. And, sorry, thirteen houses, that's sixteen acres, I think. But we have proposals from the developer who's in lawsuit with us for three hundred units and, you know, on, on, and on, above that even. So, yeah, it was not a good scenario that they could develop, so anyway, that's where we're at. So if there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and take a vote on the resolution. So all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Two.
Two, one. All right, thank you, so motion carries. Thank you. And so we will now adjourn the meeting, thank you. So in a few minutes, we'll, we'll go into our town meeting.
Yes, sir.
There you go, yeah. We have silver and a sus as well.
Yeah. And Colorado, yeah, so. Kind of the best. Oh, yeah. I mean, that stuff.
Yeah.
That's right.
No, you've done house.
What's the? On that stuff, because. Never hold a meeting on a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Good night. I know, all that stuff. Not like we haven't done this before. Maybe. Are we all settled then? All right, so I'll call our town council meeting to order, we could rise for the pledge of allegiance. Full call?
President, oh, yeah?
Here? 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 All right, thank you. Okay, first off, this is our presentation we have tonight. Mike. Sorry to see you go. Yeah, certainly enjoyed working with you here. And, and I'm, and you have a lot, but a great job for it, for the town, especially in. There's you go, I have a proclamation, let me restate it. And I'm sure you can say a few words if you want, or not. So proclamation from town of Berlin Town Council, town of Berlin hereby recognizes Mike Jarenaga by deserving distinction on his role in town council from November twenty nineteen until present. While the council might serve on the budget committee, the roles and procedures committee, technology committee, playing fields committee, the fire committee, and the managers evaluation committee, most important to erosion. In recognition of his service to the town of Berlin and the many contributions he made to improve the quality of life in our community, the town council hereby salutes Mike Jarenaga and extends best wishes to him for many years of health happiness and his future endeavors. Dated today's date, whatever. Second, twenty twenty-two.
A couple of words, I mean, my time here has been very educational, but also very grateful that I got the chance to be able to sit here and, and really do what I really wanted to do, which was to be a representative of everybody here on the council and be able to try and make this town a better place. And that's really, you know, what I found is, is that everybody here strives to do that. We all have our different ways of doing it, we have our different ideas, thoughts, concerns, I would do that. But I think all in all, that's what we're trying to do here. And I always tell everybody whenever they think about volunteering their time and service here, that that's really the main goals you should do. Unfortunately, I just can't do that in the role of town councilor now, because of life and work and shit in my way for sure. But I know that, you know, in the future, I hope to be able to come back and serve your town. You know, the way, I think it's important that everybody does whatever they can to try and help the town forward. You're part of the community, should do whatever you can to try and. I appreciate everybody who has helped me here, everybody on council. Most definitely, everybody in town hall, the hardest-working people that I've seen for this town. I appreciate every day that come to work and do whatever they can. I'm sure that Berlin is an example to the state of Connecticut. And everybody else in the community that has asked questions, approached me with thoughts, concerns, and issues. I always stress to everybody that these are the people that you come to to ask, to help out, but at the same time, provide them with information, provide them with the questions and the concerns you have because we're trying to make this place a better place. So I thank everybody for all their help, and I, I look forward to seeing everybody around town and then hopefully in the future, we will just see you on the board of commissioners. Thank you so much for.
I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate and castigate my good friend from my left. Something tells me I'm going to feel really old once he lives and someone else comes in. He's the closest to my age in this caucus here. Mike is like the son of me and Jack's like the grandson. And Mike was never a freshman. He never came in, had to learn what to do. He knew what to do on day one, he hit the ground running. And I hope someday that he's in a position that he'll be able to come back and serve as council because you did, you did a hell of a job, thanks, my friend.
If I may also just say, being, I guess now the soon-to-be-second youngest member of our caucus, but Mike, I, I so appreciate it, working with you on the council and for you to, you know, serve as a mentor in a role as minority leader for the Democratic Caucus. And I really see you as someone who has the ability to work with everybody. And I will miss your, your cool temperament and your dedication to, to the work itself. And as a young father, relatively young father in Berlin, who has a family and wants a better Berlin for your family and for the entire community. I thank you for putting the work in to make that possible, so, Mike, I'll miss you. Thanks again, Mike, always a gentleman, always great points to make on any issue we discuss and always a great team player, so really appreciate your time on the council and really appreciate working with you. Sorry to see you go.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for your time and your volunteerism and your small piece and number hours. You're even tougher than your thoughtful decision-making.
And, you know, we just wonder, you know, with the money we get paid here, if we could have probably, or maybe not taken that extra promotion or whatever. Right. What would we end up for, the paycheck we get? Yeah, all right. Severance package at zero nine. Yeah, exactly, exactly. All right, thank you. You're not going anywhere yet, right? You went over yet? No, I think a little bit later on, I'm almost there. Don't go, oh, yeah. The food is right. Don't be hurried out. So next we have our, thank you all. Citizens of citizens next. So whoever is on your mind of things around the agenda, not on the agenda, anything in town bothered you? Now would be your time to come on up? Yes, sir. First up, name and address of the podium, please, so we can get you recorded for all posterity.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Keith Bostrom. I'm a resident of ninety-seven Quayle Lane, Kensington, and I also have a tree farm at the twenty fifty-three Chamberlain Highway that my two sons and I operate and we're very proud of. What I have here tonight is a letter that I'm going to be giving to the members of the planning and zoning tomorrow night for them to read hopefully. And I would like to share this letter with the town council, this concerns the greenhouse that we put up on Chamberlain Highway. And if you don't mind, I'd like to hand out the letter from the members of the town council, if that's okay? Absolutely, all right. Well, let me read my letter and I'm gonna go from there, I don't want to pick up too much of your time. To start, I will begin with the Merriam-Weiss your definition of the word agriculture, which is the science, art, or practice of cultivating the soil of producing crops and raising livestock in varying degrees, preparation and marketing of the resulting products. The key word here is soil, just particular greenhouse does not have. The first issue that concerns me is the retaining wall, which is to be built on the north side of the property, directly on my property line. This wall would be built at a height of two feet, as much as nine feet. Therefore, the greenhouse would be thirty-two feet in height, as much as thirty-nine feet in height, ordering my farm. A concern with this height and proximity to my crops is the reflection of sunlight and how it will affect them. Not only is the reflection of sunlight an issue, but also an airflow factor which leaves fungus on the crops. These are all new man-made obstacles which should not be interfering with the business of mine, which has been here for twenty years. The second concern is how large its building will affect property values. Citizens that own property in South Kensington area have lived here because of the serenities and business of the area. There is nothing more beautiful than seeing a bald eagle flying within this profile of the mountains surrounding our properties. Chapman, quite often, by the way. The last concern I'll mention is the land, a land which will be developed as a very productive piece of property. Eight hundred to one thousand bales of hay are produced in one cutting on this farmland. The second cutting produces approximately three hundred bales. This totals approximately eleven hundred to thirteen hundred bales per year. In this land, it develops to be the second field on the Chamberlain Highway, covered with stone for a greenhouse. The first one just opened, this proposed project is now abandoned. In closing, this litus factory, which I call a factory, could be placed in any industrial park. There is no need for soil, just water. The town of Berlin will be taken advantage of on a tax standpoint. We'll be losing a distant field and true agriculture forever. I feel as though this property should not proceed, and a public hearing should be scheduled to hear the citizens' concerns about this property. Now, if I can elaborate about this tax issue. I received a rebuttal letter from the attorney of the company that's putting this greenhouse up and they mentioned the fact that they were paying sixty to seventy thousand dollars in property taxes for this property and the equipment in this, which is really had a heck of a lot of money, to be honest with you. Changing the, the area, this area of South Kensington. This property to be put in an industrial park, I'm sure that number would be quite drooled, if not even more so, as far as property taxes concerned, because they happen to find a loophole in the planned office development of agriculture tax issue, which is allowed for agriculture in a planned office, the public area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anywhere else? Any audience? Yes, come on.
Jaron Fontanella, twenty-one, twenty-seven, Chamberlain Highway. Husband and I own a farm on the Chamberlain Highway. And the proposed industrial structure will be within several yards of our family home. The family has been there for close to eighty-five years. We've always enjoyed it, we love the countryside and see this land, which industrial use. We, um, always enjoyed it. We love the countryside and see this land, which industrial use is very concerning to us. I have letters here from myself, from, uh, Douglas and Deborah Sanders, who live on Summerwood and they look down over where those buildings would be. Um, I also have a letter from, uh, Joyce and Richard Pollock, who live just behind the, of this building. Um, yeah, I think that's it. So if I may, I'd like to hand these out to you and have you read them. There's a lot of reading.
Why are you doing that? So this is on the agenda for planning and zoning? Do, do we know this tomorrow night or? One of the staff?
I know there's a couple of public hearings tomorrow night. I'm not sure.
Is that, is that on the agenda?
Under new business.
Got you.
It is. And these letters were directed to planning and zoning. I thought it would be important to do that.
Oh, yeah. No, that's great. That's great. We, we certainly wanna hear about it. Thank you for these. We will, uh, get through these. Uh, anyone else which is, wishes to address council on this or any others? All right. Um, uh, anyone, I'm sorry, anyone on, uh, our, uh, Zoom audience there? Anyone wishes to address the council? Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
In regards to greenhouse, I'm gonna see how soon it works along.
For the record, just on this, I've been nine thirty-three, can't see. Berlin, I guess, that's what, uh, GPS calls me. Went up heading back home. Let's see though.
You don't know your way?
Yeah, sometimes I pick them on turn. But that's another story. This greenhouse could go anyplace it wants to. Should go into industrial. You should not destroy a prime farm. Uh, I can now, I was, I remember when I was a little kid, it was up there, beaches. My uncle used to take the raccoons over there. It's a beautiful memory. Chamberlain Highway is not industrial. This makes as much of a science. If you went to the rush line, you ordered a prime rig and they put a banana on top of it. People are gonna be fighting on Chamberlain Highway and they're gonna say, what the heck is that? Why is it there? Does it need to be there? It should not be there. It could go anyplace. It doesn't need prime land. I also have, well, my brother brought some melody, fifty beehives here. Now, I'm not gonna stop the greenhouse because I got moved by beehives, but those are the facts. You know, bees are very important. Less and less people maintain bees, keep bees because there are challenges to do it. Various, uh, minds and other. So again, it's obvious I'm not in favor of it. It was, uh, Chamberlain and, uh, allowed me to keep these there for, uh, I don't know, seven years or so, you know? And, uh, it, it was a good feeling, uh. I think I paid them eight points upon this, so. He made a, he made a. When the other one got. So I'm very generous for my, I mean, like, I'm supposed to keep. But anyway, I, I don't think this is a good idea. I think you should be considering it. Encourage me. I love business and towns. I don't wanna pay any more taxes. But at the same time, let's be realistic. Let's put a word in the mouth. Thank you.
There you go. Um, anyone else? Uh, what's going on online? Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Christopher Pullman, Paris Drive, being on triple RC, falling sorts of there, Kennedy Firehouse. Keith was pretty spot on. I think we don't have to beat up the town council. You guys get the idea of PA four nine doesn't pay full, open taxes. Our understanding is that I could have trucks, so there won't be any proper taxes. They will be refrigerated trucks like real on this. They're gonna load those trucks early in the morning, spring and fall, and these neighbors. Myself have those windows open. We're gonna hear it, read it from front of those box trucks. It's also an issue with noise organs, because when they come over that hole down the hill, they're gonna run the jack brakes. But that's a town that put jack brakes off in Chamberlain Highway. And I think most importantly, my concern is, is how do we change the setback from four hundred feet to two hundred feet? When my neighbor that lives to my right come out of my driveway, we used to live in my house on the corner, Heritage Drive and Chamber. When you approached the town, planning and zoning, put a fence up on its front lawn because the bag of medical was thrown out the window. We had little kids and syringes all over the stuff. And they were told they couldn't put the fence up because it would destroy the scenic vistas up here. Another house that's past the firehouse that looked like they put a post and rail fence over about fifteen feet of road. It looks like planning is only gonna take it down. Post will sit there when the fences are back. If those things are intrusive, happily, they're gonna destroy the view of that area of South Kensington, which I'm worried is one of the, and I'm all over this thing. My business. This is by far the prettiest local map we have since connection. I had people that come over that moon and said they felt they were in Connecticut because it was so pretty. And if we're gonna stop people from putting fences up on the front lawn, because that's me straight. Twelve hundred foot long, eight hundred foot wide by thirty foot tall buildings times two. I don't really need to tell them, but that can be way more intrusive to what it looks like. So if we really wanna destroy property value, have them get all the benefits, true to the neighborhood, destroy one of the prettiest pieces of the property we have in town. Planet Conservation and Development has always said that they spend more money keeping things agricultural with our history of this town. We are an agricultural town. People care about. It's what makes Berlin unique. We can have that part on a Chamberlain Highway. And in five minutes at the other end of Orchard Road on Berlin, you can get anything you want. It's what makes Berlin so special. It's what makes my team, I mean, it makes it easier for us to sell Berlin. Increase the grant list. Help us keep that local.
Hey, Chris, why, why are you there? Since I know you're on EDC. Did, did this, did this, uh, I'm gonna take advantage of that right now. So did this business come to EDC first that we, that you guys ever looked into?
And I don't, you know, I don't speak for the other council, but I mean, it did. And there's logic, there's not. I'm all for increasing the grant list, you know? I mean, that's how we get our services. That's how we, we keep the tax rules where they are, still increase the services for the town. I get it. I see the job that you guys have to do. And we're all here to, to march in behind and make sure that, how this, I, I mean, my investment, our land is public. And it, it just, I couldn't sell this to someone. The, the, the benefits of the town are, are, tell you the number.
I wasn't, they, they grow lettuce in the, in the farm.
And, and I know I sit out in the hallway. I, you know, I grew up farming. And you eat a tomato in November or summer. You're gonna tell me it tastes better than the one that comes off of the vine in July in any. In chance. You know what? There's, there's an opportunity for our town, if we keep increasing the business, that my thought has always been, you know, we don't have an FFA program here, we do it self and it's only for. And we can pick up some of these properties, maybe create an investment. Pick up these properties and partner with some of these kids that have farming backgrounds and wanna continue this tradition because no food, we got problems. And maybe do something where we create a co-op or some of the members of the community, they have a little bit of money in and they share in the, the fruits of the labor of these kids. And we keep pushing farming, the community that's famous in its history for farming. I just think there's better ways.
Yeah, everyone. Yeah, hear you. Hear everybody here. Yeah. I mean, uh, my suggestions certainly tomorrow night is to, I, I assume we're all playing, going, planning and going, which, which is the place to start. We're, and we're glad you came here tonight. Happy to hear, hear your concerns and, uh.
I must think everybody here wanted to make sure that members of the town council were, were aware of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna be, none of my guys on, on my commissions or any of your commissions ever wanna be blindsided. And I don't think that that would be fair to them.
No, no, I appreciate it.
Political, this is a firm, that's right, of course. And what's best for Berlin, because all of our families. Yeah. And at the end of the day, it doesn't really matter. The church will all be better tonight. And thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Chris, other, the other.
President Shippard, Kensington Road, I just wanted to just, uh, get back in touch about economic development commission. They did do a presentation, uh, economic development commission has ordered unanimously not to support it. That was listed approximately seven different things that they, they made sense, including the Vista, the, the OCD, uh, minimal economic development, yeah, impact, uh, potential, uh, negative impact to the two neighbors who still do agriculture. But that was, uh, post rooms. One or two others, but essentially there was a, a list, so we had given a number of things which had gone into both back to the developer as well as to the planning and zoning commission. I don't believe the dispublicary portion of it, but it is on the agenda for tomorrow.
That's good. I, I mean, uh, going back, like, planning and zoning, did they keep or no? Somebody said it was built right on the property line or?
The retaining wall.
Retaining wall, okay. I don't remember that being how things worked on planning and zoning for like sixteen years on, but I don't, I don't, I don't know what's his project, you know, in town.
They, they, they came in with a text amendment, uh, particularly to make some changes with setbacks, et cetera. That's all the time, so.
All right. Well, thanks for that update. Yeah, 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 good question for Chris. Yeah. So to what extent is that, um, this favorable, um, review vote of ECP taken into account of planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning commission normally likes to hear what economic development has to say. Yeah. I don't think they necessarily take it as gospel, but I think when they're making decisions, they like to have the feedback. Because I think, I mean, the development commission essentially is, average tenure is probably thirty-five to forty years living in town, all in businesses. Um, I'm hoping to, because the commission has changed somewhat, they will take it very seriously. Uh, we are purely an advisory group as economic development, but we try as best we can, especially in something like this, to give the best feedback we can. And I think laying out the six or seven bullet points was about as detailed as we could get to say why we didn't think it made sense.
So I like first place.
We were trying to be. Uh, they did send a letter back to each one of the points, but I think we were, I mean, we had, it was probably one of the longer discussions we had quite a while on any issue. Because we saw of just the potential impact to the entire area of the town, because it is.
It's a scenic route.
It is. It is.
Yeah, Charlie, I know we're supposed to be questioning, I'm not sure time, but I'm a neighbor of his property, so I'm really interested in it. I, I think I follow things in the South Hall, at least in my development. You'll have them to notify me tonight. Not publicized, that we're not, uh, grew up for, well, publicized, but the caring, I mean, I understand the fact that I'm, I've got public caring.
I believe the text amendment did, uh, have a public hearing. This would have been maybe nine months or a year ago, when they came in with it.
Once the developers next step down to get a building, is there a site plan approval process?
Yes, that, that is, I believe, what tomorrow night is, a site plan approval process.
And the public doesn't have input for that?
I don't believe they do at this point. Um, economic development as part of the, uh, letter had requested that the commission consider that piece of it because we think it's important because of the size and scope of the project.
But this is gonna be a brown or, if you're gonna put a roof over ten acres, people have well in the area. Lot of issues here, aside the aesthetic, it affects people's health and, and their livelihood. They deserve to have a hearing. How do we, how do we move forward and make this, so these people can be heard? Well, that's a question for Mr. Turner.
No pressure.
Well, I mean, I, I can look at how the agenda and see exactly what's on the agenda for tomorrow night.
I, I think it's under new business. I don't think it's a public hearing department. I, I believe agriculture is the one, um, use that is allowed as a site plan, not as a special permit. A special permit automatically would kick in.
It's not a public hearing.
Public hearing.
No public hearing, but they can submit the letters which they have written and we can read those to the records.
Right, okay. This is pretty great. It's both way beyond normal agricultural activity, because it's a, a, a fence for its conflict.
I'm certain.
And it will let us factor that in.
Just to put it in perspective, it's, it's thirty thousand heads of lettuce per week that they produce.
Well, a lot of that.
It's a lot of lettuce.
Yeah. I agree. I guess, but I'm asking the town council, I wanna make sure these folks are able to.
I would certainly, uh, I'd be happy to talk to, um, the chairman and other planning and zoning, of course, certainly. I'm not, I listen ready to do after hearing, you folks tonight. And, uh, you know, we'll see what, you know, is there purview, planning and zoning. But, uh, it, it's important. I think that you folks are, are there, as you said you would be, and get this into the record. That's, that's important.
If a shopping center with a paper parking lot, they refer this to the site plan and explain where this form letter is going. But for one here in agricultural, I mean, are required to do all of it?
It's a site plan application, that's what's on the agenda.
So that, that's where they recover that. They, they will cover that in the site plan, but, uh.
So any letters in favor or in opposition, testimony, whatever, could be submitted to the planning and zoning commission before the meetings tomorrow night, so that they can put it to the record.
But the drawings for these projects aren't public, so how would you know?
They'll be public.
They're public right now. They'll be out, free information. They want them to look at them, they could.
Go to the planning room to spot us and have the type of available for inspection.
Thank you. Yeah, you folks wanna go to the planning office, see marine there and, you know, the, the, I mean, they'll be there at the meeting tomorrow night, plans, but you can see it ahead of time.
I'm looking at an email that looks like within our regs, there is a procedure. The commission may hold a public information hearing or public hearing and applicants for site plan approval. Public hearing is held, the commission shall publish a notice of sitting hearing in newspaper or general circulation in accordance with the current general statute. So it looks like there is an opportunity for the planning and zoning rights to do that. That would be the commission's purview with that, because it looks like what I'm seeing here in an email going back and forth to planner and, and developer, that is within, uh, the purview.
Yeah, so I think, yes, we will, uh, we will do that. And, uh, but, you know, again, you folks, I know you'll be there and make this same presentation. They, they obviously need to hear that. First up, first thing. All right. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Yeah, 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 sure.
Uh, Terry Falk on fifty-five Rockland Road.
Hey, Terry.
Um, this is, has to do with the lettuce factory. Um, I'm an active farmer on the, on this ladder in town. I do lease that piece of land. Uh, at least a lot of pieces. I have many, my fifty or sixty pieces. Every time I lose a piece of land, it affects my business, my bottom line. It's very hard for me to stay. I could easily just give up and stop farming and it wouldn't make a difference. I spend more money farming. How long can you farm? Till you go broke. That's how, that's how it works. Um, for me to lose that piece, it's gonna hurt. And, uh, every piece that I lose, it hurts and it keeps me going. You know, you can't see my farm. We have around thirty-five head of Angus beef back there. We have goats, we have sheep, we do hay, we sell hay, we, uh, do some corn. But I, when talking to the landlords are nice enough, let me use their land. They enjoy their land being that way. Um, yes, they get a tax break because I'm using it, but it's a win-win. And the land gets stayed that way. And you don't see houses all over the place.
How many acres of property?
The, the one, that, that piece over there is, is nineteen, nineteen acres, nineteen acres there. And I, I lease, where the lower lane farm was, I leased all that now. That there's numerous pieces. Where the lower lane farm was, I leased all that now, that there's numerous pieces. And this is. This keeps me going.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Thank you. All right, well, thank you all, but we certainly appreciate the the information heads up. We'll pass that on the line to planning and zoning, Maureen as well, and our planner. And again, you know, the the important part is you folks are there tomorrow night. Don't 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 miss that meeting. Be there and get this on the record, so so they can use that in their deliberations. All right. So that adds the audience of citizens, just very quickly, just moving on to the mayor's update. They need everyone for the rest. Uh thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you.
There's you. Remind everybody, as we, I'm sure we know, November eighth, please get out and vote, please go vote. Uh and just, you know, reminder, we we got it, you sign on our website under breaking news, very top, it's late, people November eighth election, very important, you know, we. Um state, they say, yeah, not us, the state has changed the the voting lines, they redistricted. So remember, we used to have five polling locations, now we have three. So, and different streets go to different ones, the the three that are left are Willard. Um Rizville and Hubbard, those are the three that are left. The B F W and Senior Center are now closed to those voting locations. Due to the redistricting by the state legislature, again, now by, or every town's been affected. In some way, different town lines have moved different places, so just be aware of that. If you go on the town website. Click on that, uh breaking news, November eighth, it's right at the top, it'll take you right to the. To the the sample ballot for one thing, and then it'll tell you, you can put in your address and know we have to go vote, so just to make sure. But there'll be information, right, right, a roche at the at the two closed polling places. I think we did it for the primaries this summer. Not a lot of people, you know, traditionally go in the primary, so a lot of folks didn't didn't get that information, you know, didn't see that, but. To to direct you to where to go if you go to the wrong one, so. Um just just so be aware of that, but I would I would urge you to check online to make sure you know which one it got moved to, so. That's important. The only other thing I just wanted to mention, you know, there's a couple of questions, a state question about early voting, that's on the. Out there as well, from the state, and we do have the charter revision, there's been, you know, you've seen some things around town about. One issue under the V and A, you see, you you've heard both sides out there, you know, make your own conclusions. As you go vote, you know, that was, the chart, this whole charter revision was done, obviously, we, it's processed. It goes to the Charter Review Commission. Things that ended up on the on the ballot for the referendum, you know, the charter revision was the V and A, we had a few other things, town manager. We want to change the charter as far as the requirement of the town manager living in town. If you've seen in the paper lately, Newington's trying to do the same thing. It's very difficult to find town managers, it's even more difficult to find one that, you know. Maybe we want to hire, not now, we have a great one here, we have a roche here, that's great. But but so these things are just out there, we're trying to make improvements, but, you know, obviously, it's on your. Direct, you know, whatever you vote, you vote, but just just make sure you you read what it's about. And because they really were things that, you know, we hoped, you know, it was positive and it was. Uh unanimously voted by the town council and the Charter Review Commission to get these out to you folks to vote. So whatever you say, you say, yeah, it's up to you. But just read the questions, if you would, and educate yourself a little bit, because again, it's it's important. But the most important thing is you get out to vote, so that's all I wanted to remind everybody with that. We will move on to our meeting agenda, which goes to our consent agenda. Start with that.
I move.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, we just have, we put four items on there and we've looked at our agenda and at the items, if there are any questions or comments from the council, go ahead and. Go second on that, we're gonna take a vote on the favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, okay, now we have another, actually, another public hearing, I'm gonna go through here quickly. We'll leave the rest of our agenda. All right, so. So, I'm gonna convene a a public hearing. For the four million nine hundred thousand dollar school HVAC upgrades project appropriation bond ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available for the public to maybe obtain at this meeting from the town clerk. So is there a motion and a second to read the title of the following proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance, incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting? So, second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, motion passes. So it is a ordinance appropriating four million nine hundred thousand dollars for school HVAC upgrades twenty twenty-three and authorizing the issue of a. Four million nine hundred thousand dollar bond with the town to meet set appropriations and pending the issuance thereof. The making of temporary warrants for such purpose, and since this is a public hearing. Um do we have any comments from the public on this? And this is something that we're, we're, we actually are looking for to upgrade all the the three elementary schools around the agenda over the next few years, the upgrade HVAC. That that was even before COVID, it makes it more, you know, important now. I mean, it was always important to do, and it's been. Uh, you know, scheduled by the town to move forward with this, but it'll be important to start. I think we're starting with Willard, right? I think we really were starting, yeah, and then we'll move to the other two elementary schools. So if there's no comments, I will go ahead and close this for all the public hearing on the four million nine hundred thousand dollar school HVAC upgrades. Ordinance closed, and we'll take a vote on it here shortly. All right. All right. Two. New business, new business.
Well, the new business, the first item on the agenda is, you know, it gives the world a signation of the town council, they're very, it's best for what I've done.
Yes, it is.
There's an action, which is, we want you to say something, then that's.
Now, we we now please take our motion. And move forward, we've already. Congressman Mr. Aaron Arden twisted his arm and tried to make him stay, but, right. Very emotional. And do do we have a candidate that's? We do, we do, it's sort of a candidate, all right.
We can watch it.
There is a candidate.
Sure, I vote to approve the appointment of a new Democratic town council member to fully expire term of Mike Jura, that affected immediately. He's a member of twenty-three.
All right. Second on that?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oh, so. Who is the, who is the?
We have a Jane.
Do we have a man?
I'm looking at you, I'm looking at you. I I nominate, I guess. Looking at you, but I'm not sure. So just, I'm over there, Mike.
Yeah.
I nominate Casey Foxer to serve as the next Democratic town councilor.
Okay, second. Second, all right, and any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so move. All right.
Parents, fine.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm up behind her.
It was a mystery after this moment. Supposed to have a death, but it's policy.
They tried, in time, if there are parents that they pay being that you will pay means a short and for you, well, your duty as a member of the town council for the town of Berlin, that's your bill. Thank you.
Good lady, sure you know what you're doing? Happy to have you, welcome.
This point.
Yeah. Let me. Getting evicted. Yeah, please. So what's just brought to my attention that there is an issue with Casey's voter registration, is that what the issue is? So I'm, I just want to bring it to a discussion as to how we. We address that moving forward until it's rectified, like can she, as far as I know, you you're. You can be a part of the the town council as an elector of the town, you know, of being an elector of the town is tied to residency in the town?
Yes. So, so for her to be a voter in town, she has to live in town.
Oh, yeah, which which she does, yes.
Okay.
Um but Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, you were not registered to vote in Berlin? Okay. So what, so what do we, what do we do about that?
So under statute, I mean, under, you have to be an electoral. So, um. And unfortunately, the last day to register to vote was yesterday. All right, until you go to the day of the end of November, November eighth.
So this is something we can recollect.
Yes, but I don't think she should be seated.
Turning to not real.
There's a, there's a, is it sixty days? I haven't looked at. I'll look at the statute for a while, I'll look at it while we're doing other business tonight, but my recollection is it's sixty days.
Well, she'll be a voter as of November eighth, if she goes in and she does P D R.
Right.
Election Day registration, and under statute, she would be allowed to vote. In our November eighth election, she's not changing parties.
Oh, that's true, that's true, she's not changing parties, yeah, that's right, yeah.
So, but it would be, so she would be registered. She completes the app, the application as a Democrat.
Right, right, right.
Democrat that day.
Right, so she'd be eligible in a week.
Yeah, go for the fifteenth.
We just kept voting.
Okay, so, yeah.
That's all, okay.
Yeah, you're fine sitting.
Yeah, you're fine.
All right, but I'll put you down as a painting.
Yeah.
All right.
There is no awards.
Yeah.
Well, it's it's good, some prior on-the-job training, so it's quite, quite a name for the the town council meeting. Yeah, that's that's okay, that's good. Can we pick up a few pointers tonight? Maybe not, I don't know, let's see how it goes. But, yeah, all right, so we'll fix that next week, so and then she'll be good for the, for the fifteen, maybe, all right. All right, we good? All right, thanks, I think we're good, you know, we're good, all right, thank you, thank you, everyone, and on to number two.
So the second item on the agenda is the budget availability by real estate associates. And we have a meeting on this, and, I'm sorry, questions? Very, very important in terms of duration.
Yeah, so go ahead and take take a motion now.
I need to approve subject to the approval of the financial non-guaranteed appropriation of one million dollars. Just from your forty-three zero five, under sign fund bill. For the purchase of real property home by a new listed property LLC in the African Street, known in. Plus, we have twenty-two dash four, block one thirty-five, block one thirty-eight, plus we have twenty-three. Dash one, block fifteen, block nine two thirteen, subject to completion of an eight twenty-four report from the Brooklyn Public Service.
Thank you, sir Dana.
Second.
Thank you. I know we just had our hearing on this, and we, you know, got updated on everything, added to the public, any, any other amount of questions? Okay, and obviously, this is what we believe to be in the best interest of the town under the circumstances, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then item number three, the ordinance appropriating four five nine million for school HVAC upgrades twenty twenty-three. Authorizing the issue of four point nine million bonds. The appropriation pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such rates.
Yes, so we're gonna take action here. We're gonna consider with respect to the four million nine hundred thousand dollar school HVAC upgrades project appropriation bond ordinance, copy of the ordinance is available to the town clerk. So obviously, same night as the public hearing, so we'll we'll take a motion to usually wait a couple of weeks for a vote, is there a motion to waive? Rule seven, which allows the vote tonight.
I move to wave rule seven of the town council rule fifty.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, so that motion passes. Uh, I mean, a motion and a second for the ordinance.
Okay, move the ordinance for appropriating four million nine hundred thousand dollars for the school HVAC upgrade. Twenty twenty-three and authorizing the issue of four million nine hundred thousand dollars bonds. Of the town to meet set appropriations, pending the issuance thereof, making temporary borrowing for such purpose.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, any other council discussion, we've discussed this, so. So just 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 to clarify, this is subject to approval if we were accepted for this grant, and then we would get the reimbursement after the fact. Yeah, so we're not finding any new money, that is for, for just for the record.
Correct.
That is the.
Yeah.
Like the hope.
Yeah.
Let me discuss.
It's required for these, so if you have to be in the feet of the.
Yeah, there's state grant money that we need to, you know, we need to hopefully get that, so we'll. Get some of the burden off the town taxpayers, so. Uh, any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those. All right, I declare the ordinance adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Then item number four, authorization to the county to subordinate the savings bank with respect to. One zero one one Farmington Avenue. Say something, Chris.
Sure, I guess, this is the former drag shop at the corner of Fourth and Pass in Farmington, I did such an amazing job on, we had given them a SOT grant. Essentially, what we're doing is just subordinating our savings bank that's having a couple of nights to you, pretty straightforward, and. It's approval of the council and our corporation council to make that.
Okay. Great, thank you. Questions for Chris? If not, we'll take a motion.
We'll authorize the town manager to execute the attached subordination agreement with respect to the lees through the town catching fund test. The SOD and the escaping grant recorded in volume seven hundred ninety-six at page one hundred and eight in the Brooklyn Land Act. Looking for review and approval of operation council.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Our motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Agenda items number five and six, if the board work they give them. What is passed and deming rolling. So, the first one, item number five, the construction contract for rural.
Absolutely. So we're almost there. We're, and for the new, the new members of the council, we have a a two-point-six-mile paving project. Christian Lane, Portis Pass and Devon Road, west of the Tarpik, and we got a three-point million dollar grant from the CROG, which is the Capital Region Council of Governments. Um and then we're gonna kick in three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars approximately. Um, and then we're gonna kick in three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars approximately, we went out to bid, TILCON did a little bidder, unfortunately, they were over, they granted out that we had, um, from the, from the CROG, we went, went back to the CROG, they approved last week our, um, supplemental funding. So now we just have to get final authorization to award from D O T, and, sorry, they're agreeing, they wanted to use money to pave the roads. And so, uh, what we're doing is we're asking, and the reason I'm here tonight, instead of waiting for the D O T authorization to award, is we have a bid window, so TILCON has the whole of its bids, so we're sick to date after the bid, and that's, uh, the government party. So, this approval tonight, if you approve it, will be subject to D O T actually issuing the authorization. And then Board of Finance will have to appropriate, approve the appropriations, which is, um, the lots of funds that should come into the town before construction, which is a great deal, usually will get reimbursed after we pay, so, uh, they're gonna be giving us five point eight billion dollars. We're gonna be paying TILCON four, four point eight, there's a contingency built in, and then there's another right agenda item for the construction inspection. So tonight, I'm asking for, subject to D O T's authorization to award, and the Board of Finance's approvals that are subsequent to that, um, to award the contract to TILCON, and TILCON doesn't work in town, and they're literally a couple blocks from us, but that's the, uh, request tonight. Great, well, thanks, Mike, I mean, we've been, you know, that area there. Board has passed, I mean, Roanoke Christian Lane, we all know, needs some work, so we're, we're happy this is finally getting done, and we're happier that we got a grant.
Absolutely.
They covered, yeah, much better, much better. So, uh, appreciate the work on this for everyone, uh.
We'll go to the plan, one of the actions, I like to work.
Yeah, we, we were trying to squeeze the paving in before, when we called the winter shutdown, um, it's probably gonna be, they could do some front work maybe, but I think most of it's gonna be in the spring. If not all of it, and really, the paving's gonna happen in the spring, you know, they're gonna shut the plants down, mid-December, or whatever, so. Uh, but in a way, it works out good, because TILCON has time, that's a proper stage, and then they'll hit the ground, running in the spring, and it'll be knocked out hopefully by mid-summer.
Well, you know what, in the winter, they could, we could beat up the roads some more, in the winter, and, you know, it'll be nice.
Yeah, they have, yeah, they have some utility location, relocation, some poles that ever so such, the moves, we have a traffic control cabinet at Deming and, uh, Christian Lane, so they can get some of that stuff, stuff done ahead of time, and just.
Yeah, great.
Mike, this is the result of that study we did with D O T, isn't it?
Um, there was a road survey that was done on Deming that played a part in this, but, um, it was essentially the grant application that was sent before my time here, when I came, actually. That's when, I think the week I started was when it was awarded, so, Zach Hill would say, oh, look what you did, you know, like, I didn't do anything, so, um, but it, it was essentially recognizing that this is a very important corridor, it's a lot of, lot of heavy, heavy truck traffic, a lot of commercial, um, businesses up and down that, uh, corridor, well, east and west, north and south.
Because we had a presentation by D O T.
Yeah.
And, uh, I can remember going out and visiting the site, et cetera, so.
Yeah.
That was a while, it took quite a.
That, that was part of the decision-making, I think, yes.
Yeah, the movement, speed of travel, yeah.
Well, we're glad it's here, and, you know, badly needed, so, yeah, we'll take it, uh, any other questions for Mike? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion, Charlie.
Move to authorize the town manager to award contract number twenty twenty-three dash oh three the Wolsop Road project to reconstruct Christian Lane, Deming Road, and Porters Pass, TILCON Incorporated of New Britain, Connecticut.
Uh, no, it's gonna be, um, Newington, Connecticut, that was the change.
Oh, Newington, yeah, I think the, I mentioned the one, so, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but, yeah, the other one, that's, we have to change it. Right, that's all, just, just.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. The amount of four million eight hundred sixty-four thousand thousand nine hundred dollars, we're authorized the town manager to approve change orders an amount not to exceed five million five hundred seven thousand five hundred seven thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars, under to approval of supplemental funding by Connecticut Department of Transportation and Board of Finance approvals to appropriate the Wolsop Town Fund there.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Uh, motion, all is in favor? I, I oppose.
Thank you. Which is item number six, the same project, uh, construction administration inspection contract award.
Right, uh, this is connected with the funding that D O T is providing, they actually have a ten percent incidentals, um, amount, which is actually four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, that will cover construction inspections, so not only is the construction covered, but the actual engineering inspections and administration, as well, which would have been even better, so. Um, this, uh, approval will actually, uh, authorize S L R to take on that task, what I did was, we, we went to, um, the CROG's pre-qualified engineers list, they have an on-call list, which is nice, because they actually have the labor rates, the hourly rates, which this project was based on. So, they're already pre-qualified, and actually had the negotiated rates, three of them, uh, indicated they would, um, send proposals in, one only did, only one did, which was S L R out of Glastonbury. And they're formerly Milan McRum, was, we've been using for years, so we have, they're on the theory of approved vendor by us, and a known quantity, so they submitted a, um, an, uh, proposal of two hundred eighteen thousand dollars, which is really based on our optimistic construction schedule, since we have four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, I wanted to increase that up to three hundred thirty thousand dollars, in case the project goes a little longer, or they have to put more people on the, uh, on the job, and this is, again, is all covered by the grant. Okay, great, thanks, Mike. Uh, and, and a question for Mike, uh, if we want to take a motion on this?
Move to authorize the town manager to award the construction infrastructure and engineering inspection contracts for the Wolsop Road project to reconstruct Christian Lane, Deming Road, and Porters Pass, through S L R International Corporation of Glastonbury, Connecticut, the amount of one hundred eighteen thousand dollars, and the authorized town manager to approve change orders up to the amount not to be three hundred thirty thousand dollars, subject to approval by, approval of supplemental funding by Connecticut Department of Transportation Board of Finance approval, appropriate Wolsop, the town park that we did.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? Uh, of, uh, motion, all in favor? I, I oppose, so move.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Where's the real towers?
There, no, no.
Yeah, it's on seven.
They're calling you, sir.
The person who's calling in, I can't move.
Item number seven is, uh, what that we're gonna do, exciting, uh, schoolwork project that's pitchfork. Uh, Doc, you want to come up and give us a quick weekend on the work, you're gonna do with this little.
You know, everybody, how you doing?
Hey.
Yeah, this, uh, sort of, grant project for Sage and the high school track, um, scoreboard on order, should be in production. We're, we're a member, I just started excavation for the fiber this week, so we're hoping that by the end of the calendar year, we have a scoreboard. This is part of the connectivity portion of this, so Wi-Fi network capability to network Sage building back house, so, uh, that's the great components, so IT director of, Brian Craig, the school, they work together. It's gonna be kind of a shared service with video streaming for sports events, games, and also, to have the management buildings, so it's gonna be great to have connectivity, the future lighting, security capability.
Yeah.
For, for, for automation, so it's a great opportunity, grants gonna help us along the way with that. There is some lead time, so certainly want to get this, in queue, um, a little bit unknowns on when the owners may show up, so. Six weeks to six months is usually the lead time, so.
Yeah.
The goal is to have this up and running from spring, spring sports season, a little, you need to work on going.
Right. Thanks, Doug, any other questions for Doc? Now, we'll take a motion.
Move to utilize state clinic contract number one three P S X zero two eight zero dash M N W N C dash one oh eight, and approve the quote from Windsor Technology Group of Alpha Massachusetts, in the room of sixteen thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars, which includes a twenty percent order contingency for technology components related to Sage Park, E E P grant, scoreboard project.
Great, uh, second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? If not, motion on the floor, or vote on, all in favor? I, I.
I.
Oppose, or motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item number eight, uh, so, put the sort of pool, twenty-five thousand dollars for various venues, like thirty-eight and sixty-one about operating materials, custodial supply. Um, there's something, sure, yeah, a lot of times, it's, poor listeners, so we could exceed the amount of the rentals, so we certainly can spend up to point five with everybody, but based on what's happening with maintenance repair, projects coming along today, so this gives us the ability to draw their business for the year, to spend up to the point five, which is our, hopefully, our new magic number after next week, so.
Can I help? Um. Uh, okay, thank you for that, like, the papers, it's, sorry, um, okay, any, any questions for, uh, for Doug? No, if not, we'll take a motion.
Move to approve purchase orders up to twenty-five thousand dollars, they have needed without exceeding the account balance of the department number thirty-eight, and number sixty-one, operating material department, number thirty-eight, serial supplies for the borrowing vendors utilizing state and national purchasing contracts, along with big waivers, if necessary, this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Any other comments or questions from the council? There are none, now, all is in favor? I, I oppose, all right, so move. Thank you.
Item number nine is a, uh, request to increase the purchase order qualification by five, to forty thousand dollars.
Doug? Yes, uh, our chosen high school annual contract factory service authorized, right, very work that happens. Um, this, this work is outside of base agreement, we try not to go all in, um, through the recommended service schedule. All the repairs, maintenance, but this was work outside of that agreement, so, we hope, hopefully, everything's well, and, you know, foresee anything, but this, this work had, had to be done, it's necessary, so it's gone more in the office, uh, so ready to go to the spring. With that said, they are no longer brand new, they're approaching ten years old, they were manufactured in two thousand thirteen, when things one started at the high school, so. Ten years old, we, I think, a lot of pride and care, spent a lot of money every year, but, you know, they're critical to the building, about them, we can open windows, so.
Yeah, understood, man. But it lives ten years, all right? Right, what happened?
Five years ago, the trailer.
Became old.
What's that?
Our building became open old?
Yeah, well, that's the, the world, I guess, right? Uh, okay, any other questions for Doug? No, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve an increased purchase order two three zero three five four I act in the fight, forty thousand dollars for additional maintenance, I think, cleaning and repairs of the borough high school towers utilizing O M N I A partners, have to, R one five zero five zero five.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other questions? Council? There are none, all in favor? I, I oppose, so move.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. Next three items, and the last one, silence. Yeah. First one, uh, item number ten, purchase of twenty twenty-three board at five, if we have, assessing, asking for.
Mister Jim, how are you?
Pretty good, how you guys doing?
Good.
Welcome.
Yeah. Um, so ordering vehicles, getting price of the vehicles has become very complicated. Used to be, they used to be able to plan this out, um, this year, with, last year's, it didn't work out that way. The pricing was just made available on Monday. Uh, so we had to do some enabling to get pricing on the body that we're putting on, but Ford only made pricing available on Monday. So that's why you see figures in there that were um, budget figures, and not with the actual vehicles cost. So the first one is a crane truck for a water department. And what we are purchasing tonight is the cabin chassis, the reason why we're purchasing the cabin chassis tonight is because, uh, the Water Control Commission needs to move some money around, so we can purchase the body, which is afterward. But we have to put the order in for the cabin chassis, or we have to put the order in for all the truck on Monday morning. Um, and what's unique about this year is they opened up municipal government pricing, municipal government fleet pricing. Uh, last Monday, border bank opens on this Monday, until it's full, and that is for the whole country. So when we go to do the purchase orders, and we go to put them in, put our orders in, um, a lot of those vehicles are gonna be bounced. If they make two hundred fifty thousand vehicles, and they have three hundred thousand orders, fifty thousand will be bounced, and we've been told this already. Who's the lucky ones to get bounced the last one, is it, I assume, or not, or not really?
Not really, uh, with previous orders, what they've been doing is they go in, they look at each order, and they look at, uh, those orders for unique things in them, and if there's unique things in them, they get bounced. I don't want to do the standard vehicles that they can ask for dues and push out the door, so, that was all part of our, uh, when we made up our specifications, part of the, thing about that. The other thing I want to tell you is that the cabin chassis price increased from two thousand twenty-two. Um, because they did not price them on two thousand twenty-three, although, going into the season, these, uh, have increased fifteen thousand dollars, of course, they have, I heard off the back, it's just the cabin chassis basic, we are ordering vehicles that are non-diesel, um, for a number of reasons, um, but the diesel would add another twelve thousand on top of that. So the cabin chassis that we're ordering for the Water Control Commission, um, let me make sure I have the right one here. That cabin chassis is gonna be forty-nine thousand four eighty-five, and I realize you have a budget there, we figure that's sitting in there of seventy-five thousand. When we go to put the body crane system on the truck, the total price of the vehicle is going to be a hundred and two thousand four seven seven, and then we'll put a, uh, contingents on it. And like I said, the pricing just became available, so that's why we're doing it this way, and we have to have the orders in, actually, the orders, I'll drop the orders off on Friday, and they'll start processing sometime early Monday morning.
I'm sorry, Jim, is there any, um, when are we gonna purchase the body of the truck? Next?
As soon as the Water Control Commission, uh, gives me an account number.
All right.
Then, then we're gonna do that, all right, the, and like I said, like I started off saying, um, there's gonna be a lot of vehicles that are bounced. Even though we have a purchase order, we walk over there with a purchase order, and that's no guarantee that we're gonna have a bid number, once we get a bid number, that's when we're gonna get the truck payment. But there's no guarantee, and there's no timeframe on when they're gonna start issuing bid numbers for those vehicles. I don't know, it is quite a mess, one of us, um, and, and I can tell you that I tried to get pricing for my capital plan, which we're gonna work on next week, from international. International told me, you're not gonna order a vehicle in two thousand twenty-three, and maybe not for the first half of two thousand twenty-four. Because there's so many vehicles, class seven, class eight, which are the bigger trucks, um, that were ordered over COVID. They, and they didn't have any parts, that now are filled, all our order banks are filled for next year. Uh, because they can't produce vehicles.
So it's any other manufacturer, they're gonna stay with three chassis?
They do, they do, uh, we, I, I tried to stay with Ford, because we're a Ford shop, and we're a Ford warranty shop, and it just makes it easier that.
I'm the same way, I just wondered this before the competition.
Yeah, there is, there is, if you go on the state, uh, D A S site, you can, you can get a Chevy, you can get a Dodge, you can get a Ford.
Are they similar in cost?
They're about the same. There's the I have my preferences, and they all have their little ports.
Oh, no, and, and there's a need to similar parts, so. A lot of it, right?
Just so I understand the process, once you get the bid number, that's when you move over the body, correct? You wouldn't do that, whether you were getting the truck.
We're going to, we're going to go to council and get the, get the approval to do that, but once we get that bid number, yes, then we will, we're not gonna have a truck sitting, you know.
Okay. Sorry, we don't get pregnant.
Yes, everything will be the same, um.
Okay, well, that's quite a story, um, so, we're sorry it's so difficult, I mean, I was, it's sad, it's so difficult, but it is what it is, right?
Yeah, difficult.
It's not just the automotive. It's not just the automotive, it's, it's everything, yeah, parts, you can't get parts or anything.
A vehicle sitting there in June, wait for parts.
Yeah, I know, that's happened, it's awful. Well, we'll get through it, we'll get through it, alright, we appreciate the explanation, Jim, thank you. Uh, there's no further questions, so we're gonna take a motion on this?
Move to approve the purchase of one two thousand twenty three F five fifty cabin chassis for Berlin Water Control for the Ford. For utilizing state, making department of administration services contract number one, nine, T S X zero, one, six, one. The amount left will be seventy five thousand dollars.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other questions for Jim? There are none, one of the motion, all's in favor, aye, aye, opposed, so move.
Thank you, tonight, number eleven, there's something similar about that supported three fifty.
The next vehicle is for the parts department, it is a Ford F three fifty single rear wheel with utility body on it. Parts department being away from pickup trucks, moving into utility bodies, it allows them to store their tools and equipment. Uh, without them sliding around the back of, of pickup truck and toolbox, it keeps things a little deeper and keeps things for a little longer, so that's what they're getting. The nice thing about this is we have all the money upfront for it. So this vehicle, even though it says a hundred and ten thousand dollars in there, the actual cost of the vehicle is going to be seventy six thousand five hundred fifty six dollars. And then we're gonna add an identity onto that, where if something we've missed, that's what we're building. Again, same process goes. We will deliver the paperwork on Friday, early Monday morning, and they'll put the orders in, and then we sit and we wait for that, for, uh, bin number. Vehicle, we.
Um, any questions, other questions? Alright, take a moment.
Move to approve the purchase of one two thousand twenty three Ford F three fifty truck. The use and parts department utilizing state, state department of administration services contract number. One, nine, T S X zero, one, six, one. For the amount left will be a hundred and one thousand dollars.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, any comments or questions from the council? There are none, vote on the motion, all's in favor, aye, opposed, or motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Just, uh, if I, I, once we have the time, trying to go forward back to you.
Right.
Thank you. Thanks. agenda, item number twelve, just to schedule a public hearing, but it was asked to bring them, several three individuals. Code book has to do with clearing up some language, came to the ordinance committee, right, the council, but the. All they're doing is, third time, what is the office area? Will be dissected on part, and then, and they have already created a piston break of this area, not, but, uh, only to clean up the language. But they have a public hearing since it's in the language.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, yeah, nothing, yeah, before you read the motion, yeah.
The November, it should be November fifteenth, fifteenth, this.
We're not gonna be here on Sunday anymore?
Well, it would be a moment.
We had overtime for the, yeah, extra, definitely overtime in the contract, yeah. Zero plus zero. If they keep on giving. Alright, we're gonna take a motion.
Move to say a public hearing on November fifteenth, twenty three, at six twenty five P M. At the Talco Chamber for purposes, we're bringing in our colleagues, turning detect amendments to chapter three, handle. Berlin code book.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any other, uh, comments or questions from the council? There are none, uh, and vote on the motion, all's in favor, aye, aye, opposed, alright, so moves. I'm gonna just hold off on this one more time, I'm gonna watch this channel, I'm sorry. So I can see it's got several different things in mind, so. Make sure that gets on the list. Things to do, and. Town managers report.
A few updates for you. Uh, some good news to share with you, remember the main street bridge?
Yeah.
And, uh, things to be replaced, we did a temporary fix with that one. This may be your team, the initial plans for to, uh, have, in how many percent? The cost, whether they're going, um, when it wasn't by the tab. The good news is state's gonna pay the minimum twenty percent, so a hundred percent of their payment, I listen to Jen Street Bridge, still paid. Four. Outside.
That's awesome, very nice, very nice, more good news. Taxpayers, Berlin.
The good news is it's good for the next. Five years or so, or even more, uh, you'll need to solid, uh, fix there.
Yeah.
Uh, now we've been in Serbia and with the red lines, traffic cams and, I think, public hearing, because it's nice. The whole thing's gonna take, you know, two to three years.
Sure.
To hit the midpoint, but, but we, because we had, we did some, yeah, we, we did some fixing on that, yeah. So the good news is all of the things people are learning, you don't have to be like, sure, yeah, I agree.
Um, and what's great in motion is, I know it was right, I think around the time you took over, but, um, the last town manager, maybe you did some, you did help some, but. We found that for some reason, the town wasn't going to the federal government for reimbursement on, uh, projects like this, so. And I would tell this, and I'm talking different things from the past and, and moving forward, so that's, that's great, so I.
I love the likes that, that you just discussed, right, the H P C project.
Right.
You found us, they can do it, combination of companies. And, you know, in all the people from the governor. Uh, will be able to pretty much, over most of it, to match, but. Pretty good, quite a time, it's done. Uh, update on the senior housing generator, uh.
Yes.
You know, the Berlin Housing Authority Commission had their meeting on the night of November. Uh, our proposal is that we will do the service and also the commissioning of the generator. And just want to make sure before we do all that and spend the money, that they would accept it and install it. Um, because you don't want to spend the money and find out if they want generator, and I, I promptly opposed buying a new generator, or it's a thousand or something that we might, and we use. Right, so it's a backup generator, it's tested automatically, okay, in case there is a power outage, uh. And, uh, relocation, they'll have to wait.
Okay. And, and so we're just checking, we're just making sure from.
Well, maybe, Berlin Housing, they're meeting on the night of November.
Nice, alright, okay.
Few days on.
Okay, good.
Uh, this is news to you, to, uh, yeah, just had a call from, uh, Mr. Bojonski today. Uh, the senior housing.
Yes.
Financing.
Yes.
Uh, according to him, he is, um. Proved that there's no financing project for required by Bell's bottle. And, um, he should have a confirmation from those, probably two pass, the ability to give funds by Thanksgiving.
Oh, so it's a happy Thanksgiving, let's hope we get that, I don't have more to report. Uh, Thanksgiving, yeah. That's great, it's been a very, very long time coming.
Of course, uh, no, for the. The senior house, yes.
Yeah, for person, yeah, the first model, yeah, of course.
Which, I mean, it's.
Yes, I should, and I'd be right, that's my idea. Yeah, well, all bases, color mist, so. For the folks that are here and anybody, and I, you know, we've worked on this for a very long time, it's been many, many roadblocks, funding. State easements around that property, it's been really a very difficult route, but we, we hope we're, uh. We hope we're getting there for the funding, it could start in fifty. Affordable senior units are ready, so, yeah, right, yeah, it's two, two buildings there, approved that. Quite a while ago, but it's, it's, it's not, it's not, it's one, I mean, it's, uh. It's, it's the whole state, and the whole, it's very difficult, there's not a priority put on, on name for projects like this, unfortunately, from. Federal government, all the state government, so it's difficult to get, I mean, but, but we're. Definitely pursue it, but we. End the line here, so we'll see what, what happens, yeah.
I don't think, just talking to, uh, Joe here, that we had tools, kind of in the same, uh.
No, I, I'm sure that won't happen, but as long as we, uh, get some kind of, but commit that letter from people who are going.
Although, the reason the project, they're not, I mean, things there. In the, especially when they get to improve the, for the window, structure part, right?
Yeah, yes, absolutely, very special. Yeah, of course. Especially if we get there, hopefully will.
Uh, kind of, uh. Updates in terms of, uh, news coming out. We, they'll be having a follow up meeting with the police union tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow at the board block, right?
Yes, it's, they had, I approve, follow up from the, uh, meeting that the, the joint meeting of the Board of the. Uh, council and the police commission, you hear they are, uh. How the proposal, they have to think, uh, they have to, and we'll, uh, report back to you.
Yeah, that, that's good, we'll be there tomorrow, some of us, and, uh, yeah, get that moving forward, um, hopefully we could, uh. Wrap that up soon, we've been negotiating for a long time, and it's something, you know, we need to do for, uh. Our officers to, to recruit them.
Yep.
And we, and retain them, that's the environment we're in with law enforcement, very difficult, so, yeah, it's great, we're, we're getting there.
And then, uh, last time we talked about the joint meeting, council and the planning and zoning, that's not gonna happen on the sixteen. It's, uh, planning and zoning, definitely not available, so they're working on another day.
In charge of activity, right?
Yeah. Uh, next week, I will hand, put in consideration, a contract that the all crew, uh, contract had been, uh. Discussed with the crew. Uh, input from the commission. Myself, uh, and the finance staff, and. I think everybody under the sun, so the contract, including corporation council, it's ready, uh, just, you know. But yesterday, so I'm thinking for the next meeting.
Correct, good.
And then we will, uh, have some interviews for the director of call, for the level and next week, I hope to get some. The guy that's supposed to be able to run that, but interview first, and if they're looking at an offer, and but it's not a lot of order, uh, it's early as December. Uh, it's gonna start the train motion. Right? That's all I have to do.
Too many times to hire someone to get possible. Good, excellent, I appreciate it, yeah. Um, special community reports, I guess, our, uh, committee we have is the ordinance committee, uh, and, and that was, uh, to discuss the, uh, the, you know. ATV ordinance, there was, you know, some compliance from folks in a particular area of town, and. Are having some issues with ATVs on private property, adjoining property, uh, so we're, we're gonna, I think, have a. What was the date?
We have a date, I don't have it, but I may correct, what was the date? I think it's in, I don't remember.
Yeah, uh. What we're gonna do before the council meeting? Talk about on, uh, fifteen? That is the date, fifteenth and sixth, okay, those were council meetings, makes it easy.
You know, I just, uh. As a follow up to that meeting, and the chief today, oh, okay, and, uh, you know, police, a lot of chiefs here. And, uh, he's going to, uh, send his community relations officer to initiate the conversation. Uh, as you recall, the ordinance, the police is, uh, it's that they are as an enforcement authority.
Right.
And, uh, we have not followed up on that, ever. There was no formal complaint, right? Uh, the two folks who are here, they initially want. They got advice, but, uh, yeah, agreed the other day, I think they didn't want a lot of the police, that's what they said.
Yeah.
But, uh, the other group, uh. They're equipped to do that, then they have the links to it, and they'll start a conversation and see how it goes. Uh, and then, uh, we'll, we'll back to you. Good, I'm sorry, we'll do it next.
Yeah, that's good, I mean, I, you know, I, you know, understood the folks that don't want to. Blather folks in the town, but that's our job, and, you know, the, the job of the PD and the order, and so on, they're, you know, trained to do that, as you said, so. Start with that and see if we can hopefully work that out, um, amicably between neighbors. Yeah, we're, we're working on that. Good, so that was the only special committee, was the ordinance committee, be followed up on fifteenth, bring this to council communications, who do we have focused on? Amy?
Charlie. Um. Um, I'm thrilled to see so many people engaged in the political process, I hope everybody's welcome back, please. I'm upset that some folks are trying to cancel their neighbors' free speech by tearing down ties. When a few words of people tearing down their opponent's side, then it, that's terrible, everybody has a right to operative opinion, we should respect it, so. Please don't do that anymore.
I, I, just to reiterate that, Charlie, such a good point, um. Be free speech, free speech, I mean, that's really what it comes down to, um, sealing signs is against the law, don't do it, and. Everyone should be free to express their political opinions. Act in civil discourse. That's what it's all about in the United States, right? Yeah, go vote. That's what's important, they go vote. Um, so, uh, that's coming up, uh, and, uh, of course, welcome to our new council of members, and welcome you again, and. Hope you're having some fun, uh, with so far, Thomas Towers tonight, it was pretty early.
That's what it's not good. Good job.
Careful where you went.
Yeah.
And I just, I just might as well, um, basically, let her, uh, have to, we're learning things, we have to, I'll be able to get through the. First meeting, the second meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, alright, good, and, uh, go ahead, so, uh, on, on to our acceptance of minutes.
We'll read except minutes of the article, reading, as we're.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or comments on it? There are none, all of them favor, aye, aye, opposed, alright, so move. And, um, we, we don't, we don't have a, we don't.
No, we did a next meeting.
Next meeting.
Making progress, but not.
We just put it in, right, okay. So that means, it's way too early, I'm sure. What about you? What about you, Jared? Second, second, all of them favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So move, thank you, thank you, everyone.
It's a easy question.
Yes, yeah, usually we've been here till ten thirty, I guess, that would be, yeah, let's not. Yes, we're saying, yeah.
Very welcome.